Good evening. The April 8th, 2014 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jezling.
President.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Mrs. Briner.
Here. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to welcome everyone to the April 8th, 2014 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Channel 96 in Mentor and Channel 22 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. Please place your mobile telephones on silence mode during the meeting. Thank you. Approval of the minutes. We have March 11th Regular Meeting and March 29th Special Meeting.
Show move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. And hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Madam President, my name is Doug Coleman. I'm the commander of American Legion Corps 352 here in Mentor. And I'm here to make a presentation by name.
Please.
Mr. Miller, will you come forward, please?
Ma'am, I've known this tradition here. Good seeing you. Our post took a vote and we elected to present you with this American flag. And it says, "To Matt Miller, an appreciation for your leadership in education and support of the U.S. military and its veterans."
Oh, wow.
With esteem, Mentor Post 352, American Legion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hearing of the public? Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. That was totally unexpected and kind of a nice surprise. So, appreciate that and thanks for all you do for our kids and all the conversations we've had in the eighteen months or so. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thanks.
Superintendent's report and recommendations.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. I'm recommending approval of consent agenda items 5A-1 through 5A-2.
Show move.
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, we are pleased tonight to recognize several of our outstanding students. I'm always proud and impressed when I hear how high our students reach and how they excel with their hard work and commitment. And I want to thank the parents, too, and community members for being here as well. These students have made the whole Mentor community proud, and I'm happy that they're with us tonight. We'll begin the recognitions this evening with Mrs. Ambrose, joined by Mrs. Briner, who will present the Sparkle Cheerleaders.
The Mentor Sparkles are modeled after the Sparkle Effect, which is an innovative, student-run program that helps students across the country create cheerleading and dance teams that include students with special needs. Our team was started three years ago and has tripled in size. The 2013-14 team is comprised of fifteen energized kids ranging from eight to eighteen years of age. It is led by three coaches and seventeen cheerleaders and Mentor students, also known as Sparkle Friends. The Sparkles had the opportunity to be involved in many memorable events this season. They cheered at the home varsity and junior varsity football and basketball games, performed in the fall and winter pep assemblies, and participated in the homecoming parade. They attended the Caring Santa event at the Great Lakes Mall, cheered for the Broadmoor versus Coaches game to support the Broadmoor School, and attended two cheerleading competitions, the Mondays with Malta Cheerleading Competition and the Champion Cheer Central Competition in Chardon. The team also received a special invitation from OASSA to participate in the State of Ohio Cheerleading Championships in Columbus, but they were unable to participate due to inclement weather. The team's last appearance this year will be at the Captain's Game on May 10th, so if anybody's interested in attending, will be there. On behalf of the Sparkle Coaches, Kelly McCloskey, Kim Cornaccio, and myself, it is my honor to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the Sparkle Cheerleaders. As you have heard, the group has participated in many events and have been great ambassadors for our school district, both regionally and locally. We celebrate every time we see their enthusiasm and their growth as they become more confident, social, and assertive individuals. We are thrilled that the team continues to grow and evolve. None of this would be possible without the help of our special group of Sparkle Friends. This group of students is to be commended. They have led the team since the beginning of the year and have formed lasting relationships with their peers with special needs. These students have put the needs of others in front of their own and made the weekly Sparkle practices and games a priority, often making personal sacrifices to honor their commitment. They are an integral part of our program and should be commended for their genuine affection and dedication to each member of the team. Thank you for the parents who have supported the Sparkles and Sparkle Friends by bringing them to practice and coming to events. Your words of encouragement and willingness to assist the Sparkle Friends and Coaches has been an important part of our success. Lastly, thank you to Mr. Miller, the board, Mr. Casella, and Mr. Wade for your continued support of this program. Thanks to you, we have been able to create an experience that will be memorable for everyone touched by the Sparkle program. And now, we'd like to introduce the Sparkles. Brittany Jenkins. Maddie Klimovic. Aurora Lavrich. Elise McGaffick. Marissa Patchinger. Tori Penny. All right, I also wanted to commend and recognize our Sparkle Friends. Alyssa Adams. Courtney Birkin. Sophia Cabellas. Gia Cooney. Jessica Krotalik. Lexi Gelner, who cannot attend this evening. Mackenzie Kennivan. Katie Cornmiller. Kimmy Cornmiller.
Congratulations.
Jessie Krejci.
Congratulations.
Emma Laughinghouse. Nikki Lynn. Jessie Miller. Michelle Ritchie. Leah Salkowski. And Lauren Scalida.
Mrs. Ambrose has it for you, kiddo. Good job.
Good job. Good job. Good season. See you at the Captain's Game.
Yeah, that's what's going on.
Right.
That's what's going on.
Hi, Jimmy. How are ya? Good to see ya.
See you at the Captain's Game.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations, Heather.
Thank you for my book and picture. Appreciate it.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. She does a great job.
She does.
Next, we'd like to recognize the Mentor High School Speech and Debate Team State Qualifiers, along with Mentor student Russell Catania, who became the first Mentor High School student to ever win a Speech and Debate State Championship title at the OHSSL State Tournament. Mr. Wade, along with Mrs. Briner, will do the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, it is my honor to welcome our state qualifiers for the Speech and Debate Team. I will ask our advisor, Amy Rodeger, to say a few words about the team. If Ms. Rodeger would come up. As Ms. Rodeger comes up, I will also introduce our students who are here with us tonight. Our state champion, as Mr. Miller alluded to, Russell Catania. Come on up, Russell. State qualifier William Klein, who's not with us tonight. State qualifier Dominic Otto. And state qualifier Nina Rue. Nice job. And I'll ask Mrs. Rodeger again to say a few words.
On behalf of the students and the parents, I just would like to take a minute to thank the school board for inviting us for the recognition tonight. We're truly appreciative of that opportunity. And I thought I would just tell you a little bit about them and how they did at the state tournament. So, I'm gonna start with Dominic, who's all the way on the end. Dominic's a sophomore and a first-year member of the team. And he and Nina, who's standing right next to him, both competed in an event called Congressional Debate. In Congressional Debate, the students pretend to be legislators, and they research and write legislation that then they debate at the tournament. And I would guess that over the course of the season, which is about thirteen Saturdays, they've researched something like a hundred pieces of legislation, twenty-four alone, for the state tournament. So, Dominic had a very strong first season, placing in the top six at several of the local tournaments. And Nina, who again is in the middle, the only girl, so that seems fairly obvious, is a senior on the team and the captain of the team, which is a job that she's done beautifully. But long before she was the captain, I've referred to her as the first lady of the team because she has been this goodwill ambassador for our school, made sure everyone looked nice, ties were straight, skirts were long enough, made sure they knew what to bring to the tournament, when they could study while they were at the tournament. She took care of a lot of the details that I can't attend to at a tournament because I'm busy in the tabulation room. And so Nina has been a public forum debater, and she has debated on thirty-four Saturdays over the course of four years and has amassed 643 points with the National Forensic League, which is like our honor society, based on her record. And I think that's the third-highest total in Mentor High School history. Nina's going on to the University of Missouri next year to study journalism, where she assured me there is a debate team. So, that's been fantastic news. And so, they both competed again in Congressional Debate, where there were 175 students at the state tournament. It's the largest event there, and they both had a very good showing. Will Klein is the third member of our Congress squad, who's not here tonight because he's preparing for an audition. And he actually advanced to the semifinal round, which is the top forty-eight in that same event. So, the Congress kids had a great showing this year. Congratulations, you guys. And oddly enough, this is also Russell's first year on the team. I had Russell in class eighteen months ago and begged him from the moment I saw him do his Mul Day presentation to join. It took a while to get him on board. But Russell competes on the speech side of the team in an event called Oratorical Interpretation. And in that event, you deliver someone else's speech and try to recreate the thoughts and tone and emotion of the speech. Russell's speech was called Advice From A Kid With A Wooden Leg by Eric Stolhansky, who's one of the actors and writers of the movie Super Troopers, if you've ever seen that. Neither Russell nor I have. But it's a great speech about pursuing your dreams passionately, and Russell delivers it beautifully. It has made his mother and I both cry as we listen to it, although Russell says his mom will cry at anything. But he really does a beautiful job. So, at the state tournament, there were forty-nine students in his event, and he beat every single one of them to get his state championship. And he also won a special speaking award for the student who ranks highest in all of the individual rounds throughout the course of the tournament. So, he left with a lot of plaques. And it's worth noting, I think, too, that it is Mentor High School's first state championship in Speech and Debate, but we are also the only school in Lake County that has a Speech and Debate team. So, it's also Lake County's first Speech and Debate state championship and the only one here. There are thirteen events in Speech and Debate, and so thirteen state champions every year. And this year, five of them were from the Cleveland area. That's our district. We call it the Cleveland District. And the other state champions were from Hawkins, US, Ignatius, and Solon. So, we're an incredibly good company that we finished in the place that we did. And so, then the last thing I guess I should say on behalf of the kids and me is that several of my colleagues helped us prepare, and we're certainly grateful for that. And we also want to extend our grateful thanks to Mr. Wade, who is so super supportive of our program. We couldn't obviously do any of this without his support. So, thanks very much, and congratulations. You guys are awesome.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Great job.
Thanks for all the time. Thank you, Mrs. Rodeger. Thank you for all the time and days that you give up for our students. Certainly pays off. Next, we are pleased to recognize the Mentor High School students selected for the Ohio Music Education Association's All-State Choir Band and Orchestra. Mr. Wade?
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, it is my pleasure to recognize our students, along with the choir director, Ms. Terry Hirschman, if she would come up to the stage now, please, for their membership on the OMEA All-State Choir. These students are chosen by rigorous audition from almost 1,000 applicants in the state. They represent the best of the best, and we're lucky to have seven students representing our strong music program here at Mentor High School. Some of the students are with us tonight. Others cannot be because they are practicing for the rehearsal for the upcoming musical, which starts Thursday. So, please join them and show your appreciation on Thursday night. I know that some of the students are actually in character right now as we speak. First student we'd like to recognize is Alex Beckler, All-State Orchestra. Also with us tonight, Ryan Posner, All-State Choir. And I also see with us tonight Emily Russell, All-State Choir. Not able to be with us would be Caitlin Dubinsky, All-State Choir, Jason Goldston, All-State Choir, Stephen Stevnikey, All-State Band, and Nicholas Toth, All-State Choir. So, we send them our congratulations as well. And I would be remiss not to say words of thanks and kudos to Ms. Hirschman, as, you know, she is retiring at the end of the school year. I've had the pleasure to work with Terry for three years, and it's been a great experience. She's not only a great educator, she's a great colleague, a great leader in the building, and she's been a pleasure to work with and has helped me do some great things here at Mentor High School. So, without her leadership and, you know, things that she's done for the district, not only my three years, but all her years in the district, we're sorely gonna miss her and wish her well, and I'm gonna suck as much information out of her for the next two months as I possibly can. So, Ms. Hirschman, thank you and congratulations.
May I just add that Mrs. Hirschman was my youngest son Jim's only choir teacher, and he went to State Choir under Hutulich.
Nice. Very nice.
Okay, next. Madam President and members of the board, we all know that coaching requires a lot of hard work, time, and commitment. We are pleased when one of our coaches excels and goes above and beyond in their efforts and is then selected as the best by the News Herald. Mr. Wade, along with Mrs. Briner, will make the presentation tonight to Division One Girls' Basketball Coach of the Year, Steve Thompson.
Coach Thompson, if you would come up, please. Again, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, it is my pleasure to recognize our Coach of the Year from News Herald, Coach Steve Thompson. Mr. Thompson has been the seven-year head coach and has led his team to a Division One District Title Game at Perry. It was the Cardinals' seventh-straight Title Game appearance this year. The Cardinals, who were ranked number one and top of the crop throughout the year, finished sixteen and seven. They played one of the most competitive schedules of any area team. Coach Thompson earned his one-hundredth victory this season. He has a career record of 113 and 60 at Mentor. During his tenure, the Cardinals have won three district titles and made three regional appearances. They've won seven sectional championships and two Lake Erie League championships. Coach Thompson, who has two children, Tyler and Reagan, and his wife, Michelle, teaches astronomy and environmental sciences at Mentor High School. We'd like to congratulate Coach Thompson on a great season and wish him luck and continued success as he continues as a coach at Mentor High School.
Congratulations, Steve. Congratulations.
Great season. Thank you. Congratulations. Great season. Thank you. Congratulations. Great season. Thank you. Congratulations. Remember, this year's honor was awarded in UC basketball. Take me with you when you go next year.
Where are we going?
UC Girls Basketball.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a short recess. We're also going to go into executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for reasons of personnel.
Show move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. And anyone that would like to leave is welcome to do so. If you'd like to stay, we'll be back in about ten minutes or so. Thank you. All right, this meeting resumed.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I have asked Mr. Porter to give you a brief wellness report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. We thank you for an opportunity to update you on our district wellness initiatives within the past year. As you are aware, there are now legislative requirements for wellness. We are pleased to report that we have met and well exceeded these requirements. One key for tracking this has been the Assembly of our District Wellness Committee, two to three times each year. The committee includes representation from the Board of Education, that would be Mr. Tuttle, parents, students, teachers, and administrators. In addition to ensuring compliance with legislation, we have shared the additional initiatives in the district, and we have talked with excitement about future plans. In the building, so many fabulous examples of wellness are in action every day across all the levels. These include walking and biking to school events, road races, kickball clubs, Relay for Life, Play 60, brain breaks during classes and testing, family fun and fitness nights, yoga, clubs, and intramurals that promote both the physical and mental side of wellness, healthy snacks for parties, and staff exercise groups, just as a sampling. We are also very proud of our partnership with Lake Health, and in particular, the opening of the Cardinal Clinic has been an innovative addition to resources for maintaining health. Besides the scheduled availability of the clinic for personal health needs, programming has been provided to increase involvement and health-related knowledge of staff. Now, on the nutrition side, wellness and ensuring all children have the opportunity to eat healthy foods go hand in hand. The first pillar of wellness is to eliminate childhood obesity and allow only foods and beverages on campus that achieve this goal. Our cafeterias are considered extensions of the classroom for our students. Meal plans and à la carte selections are highly regulated and must provide nutrition that gives students the opportunities to meet the challenges of the day. To accomplish these goals, the Nutrition Department has instituted the following. All foods and beverages on campus meet all regulations set forth under the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010, the USDA, the Institute of Medicine, and the Dietary Guidelines for Americans. Signage, posters, and nutritional messages support good nutrition and are displayed in every cafeteria, keeping in mind that marketing-only foods and beverages that provide good nutrition are available. Monthly wellness challenges with incentives are offered regularly to promote and support the ideals of good nutrition and a physically active lifestyle. Assessment of menus is ongoing. Students' preferences are always considered in meal planning to eliminate plate waste. Opportunities for our students are provided to give feedback through random samplings of new, healthier options as they become available. These options allow maximum nutrition and provide higher levels of whole grains and protein. Besides the scheduled availability of the clinic for personal health needs, programming has been provided to increase involvement and health-related knowledge of staff. Now, on the nutrition side, wellness and ensuring all children have the opportunity to eat healthy foods go hand in hand. The first pillar of wellness is to eliminate childhood obesity and allow only foods and beverages on campus that achieve this goal. Our cafeterias are considered extensions of the classroom for our students. Meal plans and à la carte selections are highly regulated and must provide nutrition that gives students the opportunities to meet the challenges of the day. To accomplish these goals, the Nutrition Department has instituted the following. All foods and beverages on campus meet all regulations set forth under the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010, the USDA, the Institute of Medicine, and the Dietary Guidelines for Americans. Signage, posters, and nutritional messages support good nutrition and are displayed in every cafeteria, keeping in mind that marketing only foods and beverages that provide good nutrition are available. Monthly wellness challenges with incentives are offered regularly to promote and support the ideals of good nutrition and a physically active lifestyle. Assessment of menus is ongoing. Students' preferences are always considered in meal planning to eliminate plate waste. Opportunities for our students are provided to give feedback through random samplings of new healthier options as they become available. These options allow maximum nutrition and provide higher levels of whole grains and protein while reducing fat, sodium, and calories. Smarter lunchroom techniques are followed as well, as fruits and vegetables are a main focus in meal programs, and displaying these items close to our cash registers serves as a reminder for students to select these before leaving the serving area. All nutrition staff is provided with professional development opportunities to extend their knowledge. Each member of the staff is trained in hazard analysis and critical control point procedures that ensure student safety as well as health department regulations. Finally, each staff member must take continuing education units that will lead to national certification by the School Nutrition Association. It is with great pleasure that we continue to promote wellness and nutrition in our schools. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Madam President, members of the Board, next on the agenda, Mr. Luciano is going to update us on our district's Race to the Top efforts.
Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, good evening. President Obama's hallmark educational legislation, referred to as Race to the Top, was meant to create ambitious yet achievable plans for implementing coherent and comprehensive education reform. Race to the Top winners were to provide examples for states and local school districts throughout the country to follow, as they too work on reforms that can transform our schools for decades to come. Menter applied for the grant and was awarded over $350,000 in fiscal year 2001, and for the past three years, we have met all the mandatory requirements that accompanied the grant. These included such things as implementing the Resident Educator Program, integrating common formative assessments into our units of instruction, using the response to intervention model in order to support struggling students, and revamping our teacher evaluation system. We are now in the final year of the four-year grant and continue to implement the required components of it. This means our work has focused on two things essentially. Number one, using grant funds to pay for release time for some of our affected staff to create student learning outcomes, or SLOs. SLOs are extensive in nature and require teachers to work collaboratively when they are being written. Race to the Top has allowed us to bring teachers together so that they work in groups to create quality assessments to administer. The grant has been an excellent funding source for this work. Secondly, one of the last major components involves the adoption of a new Kindergartner readiness assessment, otherwise known as the KRA. This assessment requires extensive one-on-one work with each of our kindergarteners, and all of our kindergarten teachers recently went through the training. We will begin the initial round of this assessment in August of next school year. Recently, the federal government, in cooperation with the ODE, has announced a no-cost extension of Race to the Top funds. In essence, this would permit our district, should we choose to do so, to carry over the balance of our funds into the 2014-2015 school year rather than exhaust them by June 30 of this school year. There are no additional funds, and there are no additional requirements. Regardless of whether or not the funds are spent this year or next, the grant has been a tremendous monetary resource for our district and has allowed us to move forward with minimal cost to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Can I ask how the KRA will be used to help us with our children as they move into first grade? That's the threshold for first grade. And kind of what's the spirit of that?
So we used to give, we gave an assessment to all of our kindergarteners when they came in. Our kindergarten teachers would screen them, and they would get information about them, basically early literacy and early numeracy skills. In addition to getting that information, they're also, the kindergarten teachers will be assessing students on science, social studies, physical and motor abilities, and their social skills, how well they follow directions, get into line during a fire drill or something like that. There's a longer window for these assessments because they are quite a bit more extensive. But that information will then be used to see which students need to be targeted for intervention. So the whole spirit of it is the more we know about the students at a younger age, the better we can intervene, the more early we can intervene, and we hope to be able to bring the students up to grade level, whether that would be in physical motor skills, social skills, or math or reading.
Thank you so much.
Sure thing.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Luciano. Madam President, members of the Board, I am recommending that the resolution accepting the Memorial Middle School Roof Replacement Project bid be approved. The successful bid was submitted by TNF Systems Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the Board, I'm recommending approval of revised policy 6.48, Student Email, Internet, and Computer Use, which incorporates the district's decision to offer students district email accounts and updates our policies.
So moved.
Second.
No motion needed. This is a second reading, accepting any comments or proposed changes.
Okay. Thank you for the catch. Madam President and members of the Board, I'm recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Personnel and C2 through C4, all related to Human Resource Matters.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Board of Education report and recommendations. We have a recommendation for amending the Treasurer Chief Financial Officer's current employment contract to include a new section, 7.5. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And second, we have, in accordance with Section 3313.22, under the Ohio Revised Code, we have Treasurer Chief Financial Officer term of August 1, 2015, ending July 31, 2020, employment contract. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Just like to say quickly, thank you. I feel very privileged to serve the Menter School District and work with fine superintendent and board and great colleagues, and very proud of all the wonderful things that are going on here. So thank you for the opportunity. Continue to serve.
Thank you. Legislative report, Mr. Tuttle?
Thank you. The House recently passed two education-related bills, House Bill 178, School Safety Drills, and House Bill 334. They both passed the House and have been referred to the Senate for further consideration. House Bill 178 seeks to increase the number of school safety drills from one to three with an additional session for teachers and staff. The changes would allow for coordination with local enforcement, law enforcement. In addition, the bill reduces the number of fire drills from the current nine to six for schools with smoke detectors or sprinkler systems. The legislation specifies that the safety drills and fire drills would alternate each month for a total of nine drills. So doing the math, it was 12, now it's down to, for us, nine, if I did that right. So there is some benefit, and obviously, I hope we have smoke detectors. I'm sure we do. House Bill 334 would allow school districts to grant superintendents the permission to expel students in certain situations in which a student threatens the safety or well-being of other students and staff but has not officially been charged with committing a crime. The legislation also requires the development of an education plan for the expelled student. That's what I would like to share.
Just to jump on that if I can, for just a quick second, is that legislation about developing an education plan for the expelled students, that's something we're talking about administratively, Mr. Wade, Mrs. Watson, Mr. Porter, and several other members of the team, in regards to not just something punitive, but what do we do for those students once something does happen? And so we're working on what that is and what that looks like, because there's a need there, and there's a bigger need this year than what there has been in the past. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
And I had a brief conversation in the hallway, I believe, with Mr. Luciano on part of the subject when I was, last time, at the Board Office. It was a very interesting conversation. Thank you for that point, and it ties right into the subject. That concludes my report.
Anything else?
That's it, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Chief Financial Officers' report and recommendations.
Yes, let's recommend approval of financial statements for the month of March 2014 and request they be placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
I'll just comment briefly. For the first time in a number of years, we did not receive our first half real estate settlement in the month of March. We do expect it in April. As a result, it would appear, based on the financials, a shortfall in revenue, but that will self-correct next month. Also, on the expense side, year-over-year spending is at virtually 0%. We are having another very strong budget year from an expense standpoint, and believe that we will continue that pattern into the spring. There'll be some growth in the last few months of our budget year, but overall, very good year again.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
It's recommended that the investment transactions presented in Exhibit 7-B be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
It's recommended that the inter-fund transfers presented in Exhibit 7-C be approved.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Let's recommend the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve invoices presented for payment as listed in Exhibit 7-F.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve a revision to staff use of cellular telephones as presented in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Dan, what revision or revisions? Didn't outline a couple of those for me.
In this particular policy, we make a provision for certain employees that are expected to be on call 24 hours a day and that use their mobile telephone devices. We will provide an $80 a month stipend to help offset the expense of additional minutes and use of the phone because of their status. What we're doing is adding our network supervisor to the list of those approved, knowing that he's on call 24 hours a day and often is called in after hours.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Can I, so we don't actually provide the telephones?
That's correct.
Okay, because in this first thing, it says provides telephones for staff use. That's where I was confused.
Should be telephone services. We will correct that.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Good catch.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
That completes my report.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Thank you. Now we'll have our second hearing of the public on any item. No one? Thank you. And we don't need any executive session. We're good.